Today, technology is the second largest industry in central Florida and one out of every five jobs in downtown Orlando is tech-related. And so this building, which was once an entertainment hub, a magnet for tourists, is now evolving into a magnet for technology and again symbolizes the evolution of our economy here in Orlando.
Canvas is a collaborative working space. It's a real estate play. Startups have a hard time predicting how much space they need. It's hard for a traditional startup to get a lease from a landlord, so coworking spaces do that pretty well. But the other thing that coworking spaces do, they can't just be real estate deals. They need to be community and you need to curate a sense of ecosystem and community. One of the key objectives of Canvas is how do we bring the entire community together so that we make it easy for anyone to start up, that we increase the odds of success for people that do start up, and that ultimately we're inspiring a lot more people to start up.
The plan there is to hope that we can turn Orlando into a top-10 startup hub and Orlando can be known for a place, known for technology companies that can grow, they can thrive from here. That's really the plan and the goal for us moving forward.
What I wish for us to do too is to go ahead and convey what we're doing here to other states and to other places around the world, South America, Latin America, in order for them to participate, to come over here, to see this as a model for them to develop.
Join us for the 15th Annual Kids Classic Golf Tournament on October 31st at the Grand Cypress. Join business, government, and civic leaders for a scramble-style tournament that helps raise thousands of dollars for more than 2,600 underserved middle school students in our community.
Good morning and welcome to the September 29th, 2014 workshop of the Orlando City Council. Commissioners, we've been planning and working on our community venues for the better part of a decade and in the case of the Performing Arts Center really for a couple of decades. And that's why October and November are pretty exciting months for our community. We're going to cut the ribbon on the Performing Arts Center on November 6th. We're going to cut the ribbon on the reconstructed Citrus Bowl later in the month in November and we're going to break ground on the MLS Stadium later in October or earlier in October. So, big six weeks for our community. When we began the construction of the venues, one of the key components was to have a citizens' committee review the work, the progress, keep track of the blueprint. So we constituted an oversight committee that has monitored the construction of the Amway Center, the Performing Arts Center, and the Citrus Bowl. And they have tracked the budget, they've tracked MWBE, they have tracked lead points. So this morning, we're going to have an update from the Oversight Committee and its chair is Greg Lee. That'll be followed by a presentation from Kathy Ramsberger on the opening activities of DPAC and Alan Johnson will give us an update on the opening of the Citrus Bowl and then Brent Daubach will give us a construction timeline on the soccer stadium. So, a lot of information to be conveyed this morning. Greg, you're up and thank you for your service.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Council members, appreciate the opportunity to be here and provide our report. As you know, we've done this at least once a year for the past seven years and it seems like we're coming to an end here. You can see the light at the end of the tunnel. I think we all knew it was going to be a number of years to get the community venues completed, but you know, it's neat to see the remaining projects, you know, come into completion. What I thought I would do is go through just an overview of the Community Venues Oversight Committee and kind of the process under which it was created and then we'll talk some, you know, some specific details on the venues that are currently under construction and under review. The Community Venues is comprised of four venues. The Amway Center, which is completed, Dr. Phillips Center for the Performing Arts, which as Mayor Dyer indicated is scheduled for completion here in the near term, Citrus Bowl Stadium Reconstruction, which is also nearly complete, and the Orlando Soccer Stadium. The Oversight Committee has a mission in scope to provide public oversight and review of each of the community venue projects. We are an ad hoc committee reporting to the mayor and the Orlando City Council to help ensure that the projects are completed in accordance with the development agreements dating back to the original inter-local agreement in 2007, completed on time with the highest investment in quality possible, completed within the appropriate budget allocations, and completed with accountability and transparency. Our scope includes reviewing progress under the budget and schedule, reviewing the MWBE and local participation, related procurement in accordance with the community blueprint, reviewing green commitments or lead certification, and providing regular reports to the mayor and city council and making sure that there is opportunities for input and transparency throughout the process. And as I indicated, the inter-local agreement was the original agreement back in 2007 which created the Oversight Committee. There are nine members, there are subcommittees for each of the venues, and generally we've had three members on each subcommittee, although we've had a number of members that were formerly part of the committee that have, you know, have stepped down and new members that have, you know, have joined the committee. We've had at least three members on each committee and because the oversight hasn't been necessarily consistent throughout the years, there have been years where we had, you know, more participation in certain committees than others. The Oversight Committee, the larger committee, meets quarterly on a quarterly basis here in city council chambers. During those meetings, we open up public comment and we review our large reports for each of the venues, new business and old business, and conduct our meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Orders. We do have subcommittee meetings in between those quarterly meetings for each of the venues that are under construction. We do targeted reviews, our meetings are posted and open to the public and available on the City of Orlando venues website. We are supported by the venues department, Chief Administrative Office, Chief Financial Officer, and other staff members and consultants to the city. So since we started, you know, the inter-local agreement committed or created the Oversight Committee in 2007, we started with some training and some background meetings and we started having our public meetings in 2008, really once construction commenced on the Amway Center. Since then, we've had 24 quarterly public oversight committee meetings, approximately or at least 51 subcommittee meetings involving three of the four venues, 65 venues-related public community meetings, and as I indicated earlier, this is the seventh year of venues oversight. The members are appointed by Mayor Dyer to serve at his discretion throughout the duration of the projects. The industries that the members of the committee represent involve construction, economic development, finance, law, planning, real estate, tourism, hospitality, and variety of community organizations. Appointees are residents of central Florida and must comply with applicable state and city regulations. While serving, we cannot apply for contracts directly related to the projects or working for companies applying for having a contract related to the individual venue projects. The Oversight Committee's authority does not constitute a delegation of any authority or responsibility of city council as we are a fact-finding committee. I am the chair and have been the chair ever since the inception of the committee. I'm a partner of Baker &amp; Hostettler. I've chaired the Amway Center Subcommittee and at one point in time chaired the Dr. Phillips Center for the Performing Arts Subcommittee. John McReynolds, our vice chair, Senior Vice President for External Affairs for Universal Theme Parks, has served as chair of the Dr. Phillips Center Performing Arts Subcommittee as well. Reverend Terrence Gray, Senior Pastor at St. Mark AME Church, has served on the committee since the beginning and he and I served on the Amway Center Subcommittee together. Giddy Colsa is a new member. He's a financial advisor for Morgan Stanley. Mercedes McCall has been part of the Oversight Committee since the beginning and she's Vice President and Area Relationship Manager for Florida Bank of Commerce. Mercy has served on a couple different subcommittees. She's been involved with DPAC and she's also served on the Citrus Bowl Subcommittee and has served as past chair. Richard McCree, Chief Executive Officer of McCree Construction, has served on the DPAC Subcommittee. And Mike Malley, another one of our new members, is President of Clancy Sports Property LLC and we have Mike targeted to serve on the Soccer Subcommittee. Richard Suwika, partner with Egan Lev and Suwika, has served on the Citrus Bowl Subcommittee and served on the committee since 2008. And Joe Thacker, another one of our new members, a partner at Broad and Cassell, and she has taken over as chair of the Citrus Bowl Subcommittee. We have a number of prior members and before I hand it over to Mayor Dyer, I thought I would just identify these, the two most recent members that had to phase out of the Oversight Committee with Don Inge for Senior Vice President for Tishman Hotels, served on the Dr. Phillips Center for the Performing Arts Subcommittee for a number of years dating all the way back to the beginning. Laura Guitar is a partner with Halyard Publications, former vice chair of the Oversight Committee and former chair of the Dr. Phillips Center for the Performing Arts Subcommittee. We also have Bill Jennings, who unfortunately had to resign. He's undergoing treatment right now, but from what I understand, he's doing much better and he did want me to tell everybody that he will be here for the classic this year. So, for those of you who are there, please be on the lookout for Bill. He specifically wanted me to tell Steve Hogan that, so I'm not sure if Steve's here today, but I'll send Steve a separate email. Cheryl Henry, who was a former chief of staff for Mayor Dyer and the current Chief Marketing Officer for Ruth's Hospitality Group, served as former vice chair for the Oversight Committee and former chair of the Dr. Phillips Center for the Performing Arts Subcommittee. And then Ambassador Bobby Mandell was a member of our committee for several years and served on the Amway Center Subcommittee. And we were pleased that he got his appointment as ambassador to Luxembourg, but disappointed that he had to resign from the Oversight Committee as a result. So, right now with two of our recent Oversight Committee members that have had to step down, I thought I would turn it over to Mayor Dyer so that he could make a few words and announcements about their service.
Thank you, Greg. So, Don and Laura are with us today. Bill could not be and they are the two most recent graduates of the Oversight Committee, I suppose, and I just wanted to tell you how much I personally in the city council appreciate your service to the Oversight Committee. It's an important part of making sure that the public understands the process and feels like the process has been transparent. And I know it came with a very high level of compensation, which is basically my gratitude, but I do have resolutions and letters of commemoration for both of you and I'm not going to read all the whereas clauses, but I will read the last paragraph, which is, "Now therefore be it resolved by the Community Venues Oversight Committee that our sincere appreciation and gratitude be extended to Don and Laura as members of this committee and that this resolution be presented to Don and Laura as a token of the City of Orlando's thanks for the invaluable community service provided during their tenure on the committee adopted this 29th day of September 2014." So, if you guys will come to the podium.
Laura, you want me to hold your... Can get back in three times today. Thank you, Mayor. These next slides just review the various members that have served on the various subcommittees. We've already talked about the members who've served on the Amway Center Subcommittee, the Dr. Phillips Center. The current members are John McReynolds, Richard McCree, and Giddy Colsa. Citrus Bowl Reconstruction Subcommittee, Joe Thacker, myself, Mercy McCall, and Richard Suwika. And the Orlando Soccer Stadium Subcommittee, members are Mike Malley, John McReynolds, Richard McCree, and Giddy Colsa. And just so you all know, the three members other than Mike Malley, this is the first time they're hearing of their appointment on these subcommittees today, so I'm delighted to be able to share that with them in a public forum. It's kind of how we get our best results for signing up for these subcommittees. Moving forward into the individual review of the venue projects, I'd like to turn it over to John McReynolds at this point in time to talk about the Dr. Phillips Center for the Performing Arts.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, it's my pleasure to speak and give you an update on the Dr. Phillips Center for the Performing Arts. Seven years, just seems like yesterday. It's been a fun time. So, here we go. In front of you, you've got all the details. I'm not going to go in. You've seen these before, who the architects are, the design, the local architects, theater design, and so forth. I think you've seen this slide plenty of times enough to know this and it's all in your packet. Obviously, the projected cost is a bottom $314 million. Also, wanted to point out in your appendix, you have a full dashboard and I do want to take the time to really kind of focus you on the dashboard. I'm not going to go into the specifics of it, but I will tell you over the seven years, we have really defined the dashboard with specifics of being able to track the individual line expenditures. And normally, a lot of times in project updates, you'll see an expected completion date and then a couple of months later, you'll get another update and so forth, but you never see the flow of where you are in the middle of that until the deadline comes and goes and you're like, did I hit it or did I not? We specifically have developed the dashboard through time to be able to track midterm those line items to make sure that we didn't get up against the deadline and go, oh my God, we're not going to make it. We were able to then put the pressure on the group to make sure that every single deadline was hit. So, please take a look at that. We think that dashboard will give you the credence and the credit and the comfort to know that we are on target. Just roughly to show you that we have about 83% of the budget, the construction to date. You see the cost of the property and the infrastructure to give you a comfort that we, again, are getting the expenditures done to finish up the project. Schedule milestones as of the end of August, again, to point out where we are on the hardscape, the stage, when we're targeting for substantial completion. I mean, the date you all really need to know is 17 days and counting to the TCO. That's the one we have got to hit. And so, that is all you really need to know is 17 days to TCO. Obviously, while we did this, we were focusing on the MWBE goals for the overall project. We're very proud to say that right now, we are at 22% MBE and 8% WBE, coming up with 30%, which means we are obviously going to hit the target on the MWBE program. Lead certification. Lead certification, we're going to end up somewhere between certified and silver. We're pushing to try to get to the silver, working obviously, the project is with our friends at OUC, but we are comfortable in standing here today saying that we have hit the certified mark and we're going to do whatever we can to pull it in, but know that we will at least be a certified lead project. And with that, we have a couple of the site photos. As you can see, the construction as of September 3rd. And there, we're going to be going to the Citrus Bowl. Again, in closing, we are comfortable that we're driving this project the way it needs to be driven. I've got to obviously give credit to the OCCC as well and Alex Martins and everything he's done, as well as the subcommittee, as we've taken and we've gone not to quarterly meetings, but actually monthly meetings to make sure that we know what's going on. As we go for the TCO in 17 days, we're going to keep very close watch on a couple of items. One in particular, the installation of the elevators and so forth, which are critical to life safety to getting that TCO in time. So, we're here as your eyes and ears and we appreciate the opportunity to be driving this project on your behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thanks, John. Moving forward into the Citrus Bowl report, you know, as John said, the, you know, kind of the data on the projects are data that you all are familiar with and you're familiar with the, you know, with the entities that are overseeing the, you know, the construction and design associated with, you know, with the reconstruction project. But, much like John indicated, the appendix that has the dashboard there, if I could call your attention to that, and we'll, you know, we'll pull out some key components of that. And this is information that, you know, we produce every quarter during our public meetings that's available on, you know, online and, you know, kind of the tools that we use to really track the things that we've been charged to track associated with these venues. As far as the budget is concerned, the total budget for the Citrus Bowl Stadium Reconstruction is $207,700,000. Last quarter, $36 million was expended. Total to date, $81,297,321 has been expended. That's about 39% of the budget. So, as far as that's concerned, obviously, this is the one that was the tightest timeframe, you know, to get done. You know, this project started at the end of last football season and, you know, it's going to be completed such that, you know, we don't lose too many events, but it will ultimately be completed, substantially completed in Q2 of next year, which is a very quick turnaround. And I'd like to applaud the team for being able to get it done within that tight timeframe that we needed to make sure that we could maintain as many of these events, you know, here at the facility as we can. As far as schedule milestones are concerned, as I indicated, the substantial completion date in Q2 2015 and then final completion and closeout by the end of the year next year in 2015. Q2 2015. So, as far as MWBE is concerned right now, tracking for 29% MBE and WBE. As you all know, Chapter 57 requires 18 and 6, 24, so as with each of the other community venues, we are tracking and through the community blueprint program, we are tracking ahead of the Chapter 57 requirements to 29%. The green commitment, right now, the expectation is that this could generate as many as 35 points, which would right now be in the silver category. These are elusive things to get done. As you all know, we were able to get a gold certification with the Amway Center, but a lot has to happen to complete the construction and get the final review to have the points awarded and we are hopeful that that's something that could fall into the silver category. A picture of the newly, the design of the newly reconstructed stadium is next. It's a beautiful facility. Hopefully, will give us the ability to bring in even more events and more special games, you know, that could be held at the facility. And I know that later in the presentation, we'll have some more detail on some progress from the Citrus Bowl team. At this time, be happy to entertain any questions y'all might have.
Okay, questions? Commissioner Stewart.
Greg, thank you for everything y'all have done. I appreciate the hard work. People don't realize in the background how much work is being done, especially by volunteers like y'all. It means a great deal to us. One thing, John, always puzzles me is that what are some of the lead items that we cannot reach? When we look at the lead certification, I know we noticed on those two, I mean, what are some things we can't, are they things just impossible because of the design of the building itself?
I think the type of building, you know, plays into the role and we've got, you know, a lot of technical people here can, you know, can talk about it, but the different types of systems, I think, you know, play in, you know, the points are awarded and I think that the, you know, this changed recently so that, you know, back several years ago when we started construction with the Amway Center, I think there was a modification of the way that certain points were allocated. But, you know, the types of things that we have to do, I know that we've got to cover all the duck work, you know, during construction. You know, we have to utilize certain materials that, you know, would qualify for it. There are certain processes that we undertake during construction. Having somebody who is a certified lead contractor, you know, that's something that we get an award of points for. But there's a number of really technical things that, you know, that a big public venue facility might have a harder time qualifying for than maybe an academic-type building or something that, you know, maybe at the University of Florida, they might have a, you know, a lead certification, you know, structure that would be easier to obtain because it's, you know, completely enclosed and a little bit smaller, you know, things like that. But I'd be glad if you wanted some more specifics other than that.
Well, it just seems, I mean, I know that often, it seems that you're darned if you do and darned if you don't. I mean, it's, the certification process, I think, is just such a broad process and lead certified puts you like in this kind of top 10% of kind of buildings that are being built and then all of a sudden, there's this criteria between the top 10% to the top, you know, of that. And it seems that oftentimes, when we look at those numbers, we often don't realize how much we've achieved by being just lead gold or just lead certified, especially in a venue that's going to have 60,000 or 70,000 people in it.
Absolutely.
And I think it's, we've made some significant milestones and I don't want the community to be discouraged that we're not doing everything. I want the community to be encouraged by what we've accomplished in terms of all those goals. Thank you very much. We get the sheets, I guess, once a quarter on the update from y'all and they've been very helpful in terms of progress and where we're going and keeping us kind of in that loop and I'm very grateful that y'all had done that. So, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you for your work. Thank you to all those who've been so involved in this process and making us look good. So, thank you very much.
I appreciate it, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hill?
Yes, thank you, Greg, and the Oversight Board and also Alan Johnson in the venues team. I'm not officially appointed as an Oversight member, but I do go by the Citrus Bowl and also the Performing Arts Daily, just riding around and looking to see how far we're moving along and also to see who's on the worksite. And all I see, and I'm so happy, I see so many WB, MWBE participants and blue collar workers from Blueprint and thank you, Gennaro, for all that you're doing and placing felons and the homeless and women and men and Hispanics and blacks on their job, not only at the Citrus Bowl, but when I ride down Church Street, all I see is minority people building that streetscape too. So, I am unofficially an Oversight member and I like what's going on, so I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I think that's it, Greg. Good presentation. Thank you for the update.
Thank you all very much for the opportunity.
All right, Kathy Ramsberger.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Good morning. We're happy to be so close to opening and we're also very, very grateful to the OCCC and Alex Martins' leadership, as well as other of our board members and other community leaders, as well as the MCOC and Greg Lee's leadership, as well as one of our donors, Universal Studios, John McReynolds, and others. So, we have several grand premiere events that are going to open the Arts Center. As you know, our vision has always been arts for every life and so it's a diversity of different types of events that actually can attract different audiences for participation. The very first event we have is October 18th and both Saturday, October 18th and Sunday, October 19th. This is Fair Winds Broadway in Orlando, subscriber, meet your seat. And what we're doing is we're basically bringing some of our greatest users into the facility so they have a chance to see their seat, see if they like to change your seat or upgrade their seat. This facility is a very different shape than the Bob Car. Most everything's been done online and they haven't been in the facility yet. We anticipate over 12,000 people coming in on this particular two-day event. Both are both current subscribers as well as those that have not renewed since 2010. We have a hard hat appreciation event. This is for all the subs that have worked in the project. This is on Sunday, November 17. worked in the project. This is on Sunday, November 2nd. It's from 2:00 to 5:00. It's for their, those members that have actually worked in the Arts Center from a construction perspective and their families. It's an open house type of event. We anticipate, again, 1,500 people. There could be more. A lot of the subs that were here earlier aren't here any longer. They're actually moved on to other jobs, and some of them are based here, and some of them are based here and working on other jobs. Balfour Beadie Construction is actually helping us greatly to reach out to all of those potential attendees. This entire grand premiere event, all of these events actually are presented by the Dr. Phillips Charities and Balfour Beadie with a number of other donors and sponsors. Our ribbon-cutting and media event is Thursday, November 2nd, from, I'm sorry, November 6th, from 10:00 to noon. And then afterwards, we're going to actually have a media inside the facility and open house for those that attend. 4,000 people are expected to participate. The other thing that we did that's a little bit unique towards opening of facilities, we felt that was important. That was also part of our mission, is usually art centers open with a, a big black tie event, and then they do open houses the next weekend. We've actually flipped it. We wanted the community to actually be part of the facility before we actually had an event that was really ticketed. So, on November 8th and November 9th, both days we're doing open houses from noon to 6:00. We're actually tracking attendance based on what happened at the Amway Center, so we're targeting probably 20,000 participants both days. And then in the evening, both on Saturday, November 8th, and on Sunday, we're doing free events on the plaza. On Saturday, November 8th, at 8:00 PM, we have a major concert on the plaza, and we're estimating close to 10,000 participants for that particular concert. Then again, here, you can see the Sunday Community Open House, and then we have a film on the Senaf Arts Plaza. You might notice the CNL Arts Plaza was the original name of the plaza in front of the Arts Center, and it's taking, we're so happy to announce that Mr. Senaf is allowed to, and has agreed to give us his name to name it the Senaf Arts Plaza. So, that's a, a new name for the, for the plaza in front of the project. We have a Project Team Appreciation Event. These are for all the people that have worked on the project as a project team, from design, it's from engineering, it's the city leadership team that have participated, the county leadership team, it's all of our volunteers that have actually participated in helping us advance the project. So, the MCOC would be part of that, the OCCC would be part of that, all of our donors are part of it, board members, et cetera. That's a happy hour from 4:30 to 7:00. And then, there's a celebration of the opening of the Alexis and Jim Pugh Theater. This is a ticket event. It's a very, very small venue. It's 290 seats. And then we have Broadway and Beyond at the Walt Disney Theater, and this is on November 15th. This is our black tie event. It is, and we're doing this in two different ways. We, we actually are approaching the event in two different aspects. For 1,300 attendees, there's going to be a dinner, a performance, and an after-party. And that's, the 1,300 will have a, will tent the, tent the site. And then there's a lesser expensive admission ticket for those that just would like to come to the actual performance and then the after-party. Again, having a variety of ticket prices so as many people as possible can participate. 2,700 attendees will participate in that. That's the size of the Disney Theater. Another event during the, it's basically three weekends and two full weeks of events. We have the Jazz Roots Series, and our first performance is "Georgia on My Mind," and that's celebrating the music of Ray Charles. Fantastic international artist, Take Six, Clint Holmes, Nina Phelan. And we actually put together a 50-person gospel choir of six different local churches that are going to support this performance. We also have, there's an integration initiative for the Rayettes that are actually going to be from the local community. And then also, we have a ninth grade effort where 90 kids will be coming that day and participating in a chatback and a lecture. They're going to meet the artist, and then they'll, we'll feed them dinner, and then they'll participate with the, the actual performance. This is all funded by the Dr. Phillips Center for the Performing Arts and our sponsors. And then Carmina Barana, which is one of the, it's a fantastic performance by the Orlando Ballet, as well as the Bach Festival Society of Winter Park. This was here several years ago, and it's actually one of the best performances I've ever experienced in Orlando across the board. We're actually presenting that on Saturday, November 22nd. These are all on sale now, by the way. Here's a glimpse at some of our several sponsors that are helping us put the opening performances together. We also, just to give you an update on some other items, we had a volunteer fair on September 12, 13th, and 15th. We had 200, we secured 200 volunteers at that time. We actually need more volunteers, and we'll, right now, we're receiving those online in phone applications is how we're pursuing it. They're for docents, they're for ushers, they're for street teams, and other arts education initiatives. I wanted to run through quickly our 2014-15 inaugural season. Fair Winds Broadway Across America, right now, we're very close to meeting the goal that Broadway Across America established of 9,500 subscriptions. We anticipate, and we have an internal goal to actually exceed that. We're tracking right now that we will. Jazz Roots is another series that the Dr. Phillips Center is actually presenting. We have several subscribers that have participated and purchased tickets for this as well. You can either be a subscriber for all of them, or you can buy individual tickets. The Orlando Ballet is actually going to be at the Dr. Phillips Center. We're, the center itself is a sponsor of the Orlando Ballet to make that possible. You can see the number of series and events that they have. The Orlando Philharmonic is at the Broad, is at the Bob Car. We're still very, very supportive of their efforts at the Bob Car and hope that integrate some of their performances at the Dr. Phillips Center soon. In addition, we've actually, have been supportive of their efforts in terms of ticketing, where we've joined ticketing systems with the Philharmonic. On sale now, you can see several of the different programs that we have on sale now. I'm going to run through here quickly. We've announced some shows. Some of them aren't on sale yet. So, Slavas No Show is a fantastic performance. If you've not heard about this, it's absolutely tremendous. It's a two-week run at the Arts Center. We have family events that you can see. We've got dance events. We also have a school series with Mayhem Poets and the Ugly Duckling. And then we have an arts education program that we're aggressively pursuing. We just, one I'd like to highlight is PNC actually awarded the Dr. Phillips Center, and we partnered with and wrote a grant and brought in the Science Center. It's a $400,000 grant that has already been awarded, and we already have teachers working inside the Paramore area at Washington Shore's Elementary School, as well as the Nat Forward School, working with little guys, pre-K kids. So, that's already up and running. So, we're actually ready before we're open. We have much, much more that we're announcing over the next several weeks, and we're going to be announcing the majority of our artists of all the events that we spoke to on the opening events probably later this week. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Exciting couple of months. Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Alan?
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, and audience members. It's a pleasure to be here today to give you an update on where we are at the Orlando Citrus Bowl with our construction and also with our opening ceremonies that we have coming up. So, demolition started on January 29th, full demolition. We did a little bit of work beforehand, but right after monster trucks, and we got the 60,000 patrons out of there and the trucks out of there, we began a very fast and furious demolition process and construction. And I encourage you, if you haven't gone to it, go to the Turner Work Zone Cam. It's a Turner Work Zone Cam, and it's a live cam. We have two cameras out there. But in the top left-hand corner is a time-lapse video that you can click on, and it's fascinating to see what we started with and what we have today. Our ribbon-cutting ceremony is scheduled for November 19th at 10:30 AM. I believe we've already sent that information to your calendars, but we'll give you more details as it comes forward. But right now, we're planning to do that at the corner, the northeast corner on Church in Rio Grande. Our first public event's going to be the November 22nd Florida Blue Florida Classic. We're excited to have that game, and that'd be our first event there. And I think the teams are excited as well to be that first event, and the patrons that will come, and that is November 22nd. We also follow that right up, December 5th, 6th, 12th, and 13th with the Florida High School Championships. We're proud to have that. Hopefully have some local schools that will anticipate. That helps attend us, but also it's good to have them play on our new stadium for the first chance. They're going to have to do that. And hopefully, they'll grow into college players and come back and play in one of the bowl games, hopefully. So, December 29th, we have the Russell Athletic Bowl, be the first of our bowl game season. And then on January 1st, we have our New Year's Day Bowl Game, and that is, there are rumors about the name out there, but I won't say anything until that's official by somebody else. Then we start with monster trucks on January 24th. We are also in the process of finalizing dates for our free community open houses, but they will fall the November 22nd. We are really on a fast track to get the construction done. We want to make sure that we have our game ready on the 22nd, so we pushed a lot of those openings to the week after and two weeks after that. And as you can see, our counter gets pretty full with the high school football championship. So, finding a open date and to, and welcome the community, where there's a little bit of challenge, but we are going to do that. We are also resuming giving tours of the Citrus Bowl. This Thursday, we start with the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce of Metro Orlando and the Working Together Coalition. Mayor and Commissioners, I mentioned earlier that the Orlando Citrus Bowl would be game-ready for the Florida, Florida Blue Florida Classic. I'd like to call on Brent Dawback, our construction project executive for the Citrus Bowl and our soccer stadium, to provide an update on exactly what game-ready means, what patrons can expect at the Florida Blue, Russell Athletic, and the New Year's Day Games, and the final build-out of the stadium. As we move to start construction in the soccer stadium later this fall, I have also asked Brent to provide an initial timeline and overview of the construction schedule for that venue. Brent?
Thank you, Alan. Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners.
Morning.
I'm going to go back to, to one slide, because similar to the, the Center for the Performing Arts, the one number that we're looking at right now is the second bullet point. We have 54 days until we're playing football in the stadium. So, as you can imagine, our workforce has ramped up quite a bit, especially over the last 60 days. I think when, one of the last updates we gave, we were around 450 workers. We're now consistently running at 800 plus workers on site. So, on any given day, we'll have that many out. We're peaking, some days we'll have up to, to 850. We think we're probably going to have to have around 1,000 workers on site on a given day in order to, to bring this thing home. So, we'll continue to ramp up. We have had about 25, a little over 2,500 workers go through our safety orientation, and those, obviously, some of the earlier trades have phased out at this point. So, we do continue to have workers go through that orientation process as we start to bring on our finished trades for some of the suites and the other areas that are currently being built out. We have a total of about almost 570,000 man-hours that we've expended so far. That was as of last week. And Commissioner Hill, as you mentioned earlier about the Blueprint Program, we have had 20, or 228 hires to date, of which we've had 102 ex-offenders and 42 homeless. And again, when you drive by that site, you do notice a number of, of minorities and women out on the site as well. We are consistently tracking at about 66% of our workers on site being either minority or women. So, getting into the construction update, we just thought we'd show you a few photos. We are starting the site work now. It's been, it's looked pretty rough out there. We're starting in the, in the south. You can see the administration building on the left-hand side of the, of the photo here. And we're working our way around the building up toward, this is a picture from Rio Grande. One of the items of note there is the big scoreboard structure that we have in the south end zone, and we'll see a photo of that from inside the stadium as well. The new structural steel frames that make up the facade of the building are now complete. You can see from this photo, they're being painted. You've seen quite a few of the renderings. Greg Lee showed one, and we'll show that one again of what that facade will look like when complete. But this gives you a, a pretty good idea of, of the, kind of the new look of the Citrus Bowl. Our concourses now are really developing. We're, we're starting to paint all the buildings. The masonry is nearing completion. We'll probably be complete in the next week or two. We're starting to paint those walls, really get in some of our finished trades. As of last week, we started installing some of our plumbing fixtures. So, we're, we're looking to actually turn over a couple buildings in the next couple weeks so that we can go in and, and everybody put their eyes on it to make sure we have the, manage the expectations of, of all the parties. So, we'll turn over a concession building and a restroom building within a couple weeks. Our suite work is very intense right now. This is a picture of the East Suites, where we've elected to move all of the glass from in front of the seating to behind the seating so that we can create a better experience for the suite holders. We're in the process of moving that glass right now. There are quite a bit of work going on. This picture was taken pretty late in the day, so I know it doesn't look like there's a lot happening there, but there are quite a few guys up on that level. The West Suites, which were basically a complete demolition of everything interior, are being built back. We're, we're almost finished with the enclosures, you can see in this photo here. The, the framing for the glass is going in, and we'll start to see glass get installed earlier next week. As Alan had mentioned, the Turner webcam, this is a screenshot taken from the Turner webcam that you can go, and it will give you the same shot throughout the, the timeline of the building. So, it actually starts, I think, a day or two before the, the demolition ceremony back in January. So, it's pretty neat to look at that time-lapse video. But we're looking towards the south here. As I mentioned, the new large scoreboard structure. The structure is complete. All of the scoreboard components have been installed. We have not turned that scoreboard on yet. We are looking to have permanent power later this week so we can start to, to power up that board. We are probably looking to turn that specific board on somewhere in the month of October. So, look for, for that event coming up. You can see from the photo here, we have a lot of seats installed. Before we install seats, we generally will install all the handrails. So, it's hard to see in this picture, but we do have a lot of the things that you need to be game-ready for the Florida Classic on November 22nd. So, we have, this photo was actually taken from Thursday, and there are quite a few seats that have been installed since then. We have a very unique seating system that allows us to, to install these in a very efficient manner. So, on the other, they do have a second webcam on the Turner website that shows the north end. This really kind of shows you the, the iconic Fan Plaza that we have in the north end zone. This is a very large space, and I think it, it's very flexible for either private outings or just a place to gather for fans from, that have seats in the lower bowl and in the upper seating bowls. You can also see the, the scoreboard structure. We do have auxiliary scoreboards in the, in the north end zone. One of the reasons that we left the stadium open on that end was because of the view that you have of Lake Lorna Dune, and it is a pretty dramatic view when you sit in the, in the suite and the upper bowl of, of that end zone. So, on each side of that, the Fan Plaza, we do have the, the auxiliary scoreboard. So, quite a bit more video in this stadium than what fans were used to in the past. You can see also in this photo that we are working on the playing field, that the field will be put back in later, in October. We're probably a couple weeks away from putting the turf down. So, right now, they're working on some of the under-drainage and some of the irrigation. So, 54 days, we need to be game-ready. What game-ready means is that we're going to have about 80%, of the stadium complete. So, we are currently targeting to have approximately 50,000 seats available. We will have more seats in the stadium, but really, the limiting factor is going to be the amenities for the fans, including restrooms and concessions. So, we need to make sure that we're getting all the restrooms and concessions in place to support those 50,000 fans. Ultimately, the, the stadium obviously will be able to hold much more than that with a maximum capacity of 65,000, but for the Florida Classic, we're looking at 50,000. The most notable areas that will not be complete are the clubs on the plaza level. We have enclosed and open-air clubs on each sideline, and we also have a, a club in the south end zone that construction has not started on yet. So, those areas will not be ready for, for the Florida Classic. So, from, in walking in the building, when we say that areas are not complete, they will, for the most part, be, the envelope of the individual buildings will be installed. So, it's, it doesn't look like a construction site per se. It'll just more, look more like a shell of a building. So, we will be going through some of these areas, specifically the clubs, to access the seating for the, for the Florida Classic. And then about six weeks later, we do have to, we are targeting that all areas in the stadium are available for use. So, for the Russell Athletic and the New Year's Day Bowl Games, we will have 100% of the seats available and have all the amenities in place. The only club that may not be done for the, those bowl games is the club in the south end zone. That was one that was one of the latest additions to the project. So, we are currently finalizing the design and cost for that, and we'll start building as the design and cost for that and we'll start building as soon as that is complete. And then as Greg Lee had mentioned in his timeline, we do have our substantial completion for the stadium in April 2015. And then we will close out the project for several months after that. So somewhere around the end of 2015 should be the final completion of the stadium. So again, here's the rendering that we showed. They've actually, one thing we didn't have in these photos, it was a little difficult to see. They've started to paint the facade of the building. The yellow elevator shafts that you see in the middle of that, of the rendering are complete. We've started to paint the roof red, as you see, the underside of the roof red, as you see in this rendering. And we've started to install some of these metal panels that kind of make up the new look of the stadium, as well as the canopies that you see on the left-hand side. We're also showing here, this is a view for, at the northeast corner. This is the corner of Church and Rio Grande. In that, we do show these monumental stairs, as we call them, up to the Fan Plaza that really we think is going to be one of the real iconic features of the stadium. And the view from that Fan Plaza, as you can imagine from this rendering, is pretty dramatic in the fact that you get all this video around you. And with the new seating bowl, even though the stadium holds 65,000 people, it does feel very intimate with how the bowl was constructed. So we look forward to having our stadium game-ready here in 54 days. Any questions on the Citrus Bowl before we move on to the soccer stadium?
Questions on the Citrus Bowl, anybody? Commissioner Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. Please forgive my ignorance. I was looking at the board, display board, which is on the south side. And of course, I like the idea where you're leaving the view open in order to be able to see Lake Nona. I wonder, I mean, Lorna Dune, not Lake Nona, Lorna Dune. I'm sorry about that.
It'd be a great view.
As I said before, pardon my ignorance. But most people, unless you're sitting on a higher level, you won't be able to see much of the view. And the other thing is, most people are not going to be looking at the view anyhow. They're going to be looking at the game. So I was just wondering how come we don't have, because I'm looking at the south side, the people sitting on the upper levels or medium levels. I mean, I don't know what kind of view they're going to have on those two other boards. Are they going to be that clear with the scores and all that? Is it going to be like very visible compared to the bigger board?
The two auxiliary boards in the north end zone are the same, they have the same pixel size as the board in the south end zone. They're not as large, so the image probably will not be, you know, quite as clear, but it is the same resolution. So we can still display full video on those auxiliary boards as well. And if you remember, at one point, probably a year ago, when we were talking about the competitive scope, we had the Fan Plaza in both end zones. And one of the things that were important to us was to have 60,000 fixed seats within the stadium. So as part of that process, we were choosing which end zone to put those permanent fixed seats in. And we still wanted to leave one of the Fan Plaza's areas available so that you could have these meeting places and have the flexibility for other events up there. So it just made sense that we would put the fixed seats in the north, or I'm sorry, in the, in the south end to open up the stadium in the north end.
Okay. I was just checking, double checking on that because I, I don't know, it sounds to me, most stadiums, you go and you find the scoreboard at a higher place, lower, lower to, I guess, to eyesight. And that seems pretty high, but you know, if it works, it works. Thank you.
I'm pretty excited about that Fan Plaza too because I can't think of too many stadiums, well, I can't really think of any in the country that have that amenity that's going to be a gathering spot during the game. But also, I think you'll see people leasing that out for other types of events and parties, even when the stadium's not in operation. Anybody else? Okay, Brent, you have a report on soccer as well?
Yes. Okay, on the soccer stadium, we did want to take you through a little bit of the timeline and then also show you some of the renderings and point out some of the, kind of the key features of the stadium. We are starting to work on the site work right now. And this is preparing the site for construction. This includes environmental remediation. We are relocating the, one of the ponds that are on Church and Paramore. And we are also working on abandoning the utilities, traffic signalization and things like that for Paramore so that we can build the stadium on that site. There also is an existing fire station at the northwest corner of the site that will also be relocated. We do have the groundbreaking scheduled for October 16th. And then work on site will start thereafter. And we have been gearing towards these dates for, I guess, about the last year now. We've met earlier this year a group in Kansas City for a design charrette, which ultimately has led to, obviously, the progression of the design that we're currently reviewing right now for the soccer stadium and the layout of how that relates to the site and obviously all the components of the building. Stadium completion is scheduled for spring of 2016. Their season starts somewhere in the March to April timeframe. So the goal is to get the team in there for the beginning of the season. As we mentioned about the site work that's going on, this shows you the most current site plan where the stadium has been shifted to the west about half a block. So it's now budding up to Glen Lane on the, on the west side, and Church Street on the south and Central on the north. So you can see the stadium is right, right in the middle. We do have kind of the, some of the back of the house and team facilities on the left-hand side of the page. And then our, the team store and what we call a scoreboard room on the, on the south side that kind of make up the grand entry off of the, off of Church Street. This is a rendering of that view. You can see the, the entry here is basically at street level. One of the things that was very important for, for the design of the stadium was to be able to look into the pitch itself. So the field was actually lowered, I think about eight feet below street level so that you could have this view into the stadium and create this, really this entrance at the corner of Church. You do see the, the large structure that's on the left-hand side of the rendering is the building that houses the scoreboard. And below that is the scoreboard club. So not only is that a club for, for events at the stadium, but it's also a space that, that could be utilized for meetings or ceremonies or anything like that, you know, during non-events. We do have a few unique design elements to this. One of the things that was very important was to have a canopy over all the seating areas. So you see the three canopies over, you know, the grandstands on the west and the east side and also above the, what is the supporters' area at the north end zone. And our design team, Populous, and their structural engineer have been working on how to build those canopies as efficiently as possible. What you see in this rendering is a, is a, what they call a mast-in-stay design. So it's a really pretty unique and very modern look to the canopy. This is actually a view from the supporter section in the northeast corner. So you are looking back towards that entry that we saw off of Church Street. You see the scoreboard, the scoreboard club. On the right-hand side, you also see the different levels of suites that are about nine or 10 rows off of the, off of the pitch. And then you have a club level above that. And then you have, I believe, what are referred to as the skybox suites and the press level up above that, just below the canopy. Okay, so any questions on the, on the soccer stadium?
Questions? Okay. I think it's going to rain every day from now till the Florida Classic, just contractors at the Citrus Bowl.
That has been the case in the last three weeks, so.
At least no hurricane. Cross our fingers on that. All right. Thank you, Brent.
Okay.
All right. That concludes our workshop for today.